With that, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed river and rail brownfield redevelopment floating zone. So I'll make down the form of a motion. I'll have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You heard me, everybody heard me earlier about the brownfield. I know Ellie wanted to speak, so I'll let Ellie up to speak first.
Hello, my name is Ellie Casner. I reside at 9 West Shore Drive in Tompkins Cove, New York. I am running for Stony Point Town Council this fall. I wanted to start by saying that I respect all of you. I've worked with a lot of you on different projects over the years, and if elected in November, I hope to do the same further for the future of Stony Point. But in this instance, I disagree with the town council and the town planners' office to pursue -- excuse me -- pursue the proposed river and rail brownfield redevelopment floating zone. After doing significant research on this type of districting, contacting a number of experts, and having a working understanding of zoning based on my professional career in commercial construction, it's the American Planners Association that put it most clearly, quote, "Floating zones provide flexibility for developers who can use the zone to obtain density bonuses, height extensions, et cetera. Floating zones undermine the ability of citizens to rely on the predictability of the zoning map and can favor private development over the public interest," end quote. Why wouldn't we want to limit the input of our town citizens and give the upper hand to an incoming private developer in a sort of blanket way? Importantly, I think we need to acknowledge that while our neighbors like Havestrough, Nyack, Peekskill, and others have worked to become river towns where people can walk and enjoy themselves, we're the only town that's working to become re-industrialized. People from our town drive to those other towns to eat, enjoy their restaurants, spend money, see art, get together with their families. There's no reason that we can't work to have things like that here in Stony Point. In this instance, I think we should also consider as an anecdote the town of Coimans, a town located on the river upstate New York. And the privately developed port of Coimans has been expanding in size in scope without interference or limits, barriers since 2006, and it's all but taken over the town. There's a lot of waste in the town that is sitting there waiting to be dealt with, and the town citizens that were once for it are really against it at this point. While the decision to move forward with approving the floating zone seems innocuous, it's what happens with it in the future that is the real issue. And in a past meeting, the new Planet Energy was mentioned as a potential revamp, or in the Rockland County Business Journal, there was news that the new owner of the Lovett site, the Hauling Group, can benefit significantly from the floating zone. And I guess my question in that way is, why are we finding that out from the Rockland County Business Journal instead of the town board? There should be some transparency there. Perhaps most importantly, the Stony Point local waterfront revitalization plan was finalized in 1994. Think about how much our world has changed in terms of development, town makeup, technology, and community in that time. I urge you first to work to draft a new town usage plan, which requires significant public input before making the sweeping decisions like this that can irrevocably change the nature of our town. If the surveying reveals that reindustrialization is what Stony Pointers really want, then that's the direction we can go. But if in approaching a proper waterfront revitalization plan again in this totally different time reveals that Stony Pointers want something different, we owe that to them. And so, thank you for taking the time to listen here and leaving the public hearing open so that we can do that over time. At the very least, I really hope that you and the town planning board will consider the feedback from Rockland County Department of Planning because they're experts, and in the Eagle Bay case, their comments were overwritten. I just thank you for the time to speak. And the last thing I would just say in terms of the MOU is that if it's August now and we're supposed to vote in November, there's really only a couple months before a full plan can be revealed, before we're supposed to go to the polls. So the timing is very tight, I would say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just want to remind you, and I don't mean this because I'm sure you didn't know, public hearing, public input, it's not about running for office. I'm glad you are, wish you all the best. That's not what the purpose of this. And like Dr. Julian said earlier, I hope we can all work together that it does not become about politics, because when politics gets involved, it never helps the town. Part of -- we're going to listen, you made some valid points. So, next up, Mike Dietrich.
Thank you, good evening again. Mike Dietrich, 361 Route 210. My comments really have to do with land use planning, supervisor comments regarding last year Patriot Hill and Mr. Julian's, Professor, Dr. Julian's comments. I tend to agree with you more than him on this subject. He was very close, and I myself was on the fence, but you're right, fear was, I think, the biggest factor. And the problem there was, and this is what I brought up at the end of the campaign, what we -- the town needed was legal constraints.
Mike, this is a public hearing on the brownfield development?
Yeah, yeah. I'll move on.
I'm going to bring you back to that.
I'll move on. The overarching thing, whether it's last year's issue or this year, two things regarding land use and brownfields development. You have two bodies of law that cover it. One is land use law, land use planning law, and the other is SECR, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. They work hand and glove. So, land use law means sound, reasonable regulation of land. So you as a town board, what you should do in that regard, I'm being attacked by a fly here, what you should do in that regard, and what people have advocated for in this town, and I will again, you should revise the master plan, because the master plan document of a town should be the bible for the development of the town land use-wise. So regarding this town, we have Harriman Park to our west, one of the most fantastic assets in the state, the second largest park. We have New York City to our south. We have Bear Mountain, West Point to our north, and we have the most scenic part of the Hudson River to our east. We should be, and we're in a post-COVID world, it's a new world out there, where people are telecommuting a lot more. I think there's a lot more land use options out there than you've been considering, and the only way you will be able to consider things is by opening your eyes and ears, as you try to do, and I think it's good to have different perspectives, and see what are the options. So, one item, land use law, master planning, I would say we need to update the master plan to see what works, not only as isolated, oh, what about right here, but also how it might connect, how things might connect up with the parkway, the river, the park to our north and to our south. The other thing, procedurally, what you're supposed to do as a governmental entity is have whatever you do be consistent with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And the basic principle there is if you have something that may significantly affect the environment, operative word is "may," then you should have an environmental impact statement. And that's before you make any decisions. So you shouldn't be pre-committing yourself to a project until you've, A, looked at environmental consequences, and B, examined alternatives. So I think that's a big problem, I see, with this particular proposal, because I think you might be cutting out options.
Just want to correct you. The brownfield is not about a particular project, okay?
No, I understand that. So you have.
Could benefit different projects here, different land use, but this brownfield floating zone is not about a particular project.
I agree. And I also, as George and Ellie pointed out, when you start enacting a local land use law that starts to either constrain you or give a developer too much as far as what they can get, then you're in the situation where you end up going down a path where it would be more prudent, and also I think required by SECR, to have something where you have alternatives out there first before you decide. Like, for example, I liked a lot of what Raj proposed. Why isn't he maybe being asked, does he, would he like to revive portions of his plan? What about all the developers in this region? And there's plenty. Does any of them, do any of them have a potential better idea? And that's what I think you should be looking at, is proposing things where we have options. And before you start narrowing, now you already are proposing a sale.
Okay.
Before you have a sale, have options.
Thank you, Michael.
To make your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. One sec, one sec. I'm going to ask you, because I'm ready to go here for myself by answering, Michael, and I'm actually doing, if I do that, I'm doing what I'm telling you not to do, is this is for the rail brownfield development that we're talking about. Quick note, you went off on a different subject, Mike, but we've had many people come to meet with me in the town, and it's always open. This is the only firm offer that we've had. But I don't want to go there, I want to make sure we stay on what we're here for, the public hearing.
Yeah, but my suggestion is to advertise for proposals. That's all. Advertise to the world, we'd like proposals, that's why we're proposing proposals.
Please have a seat, thank you.
Hello, good evening. Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Kraus, 21 High Street, Stony Point, New York. I'm not here about the pickleball court, as I was last time, to congratulate the board, I don't know if you remember, I had a few other things. I'm going to be, make a quick mistake, I want to just talk about the MOU for a moment.
You're not?
No, it's okay, it's okay.
I'll give you 10 seconds on the MOU.
Yeah, that's all I need. Because I like the idea that you've learned to put it to a memorandum, which probably came from being forced on the last one. I also, my concern, off the top of my head, is this is 20 units per acre, if you do the math, and that seems a little crowded, and there's no, on the plan, you don't see where the parking is set. Okay, we're ready for the zone.
I'm going to bring you back. If you have anything on the public hearing?
I do.
Okay. Let's go to that.
Okay. I'm ready to go. So, on the zoning, I actually think it's a pretty good idea. And I will tell you why. I like the fact that you're going to focus on the river and the rail, and try, if I understand it properly, to restrict the amount of trucking. In this county, if you keep track, and it's one thing that's in the business paper, if you keep track, there's so many warehouses going in, I know we're far away from the thruway, the trucks, the pollution, the noise, they just closed my tennis court a little bit north of Rockland, basically, they're going to make it into a warehouse. I mean, you probably know this, but there's so many others have been, so I like that focus, because that's not what we want for this town. The things that, and I like the idea that maybe we could somehow get rid of the Gibson Plan through this, that somebody can come with a proposal to use or replace that project, because to me, that is something which needs to be done. So the positives. I have some concerns about the environmental review, as we've been expressed. I assume that any time a project is proposed, it will go through the sequence of the town board, the planning board, a public hearing, and a Type II environmental review, which is a concern. There's also questions about the river and how potential pollution. I don't want to see these towns sued by environmental groups or other groups, because some of these projects end up polluting the river. But that's for the future. This is an overall zoning, I understand, and frankly, you know, I'm using that as cooperative, I do see that this is a step forward, and a creative way to get proposals, as long as everybody understands that is, is a proposal. When the Tappan Zee Bridge work was done on the old Lovett, part of the old Lovett site, that was terrific. It was clean, it was terrific, it made the town some money, and incidentally, these could also bring in taxes, whereas anything is built here and we approve it. But I guess my focus is that this be done slowly, understood, that the public is aware as we move forward, and to me, that is the key. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. George Patonovic?
I live at 597 Old Gate Hill Road in Stony Point, and I'm also the president of the Stony Point Action Committee for the Environment. I gave a letter to the supervisor and a copy of it to the town clerk. I'd like to read a letter that I worked on today regarding the hearing today. Space's comments on the proposed river and rail brownfield redevelopment floating zone. Dear Supervisor Monahan and Town Board members, Space is writing to provide comments on the town board's proposal for a local law that would establish a river and rail brownfield redevelopment zone, RRBR. The town board is holding this important public hearing on zoning changes to our waterfront on August 9th, a time during the heat of the, the heart of the summer.
We're going to continue the public hearing until two months, I don't want to.
I know. I know what you're putting out, longing for no. Well, I hate to say that. The heart of the summer, this is originally what we thought, right? Leaving many residents unaware or unable to attend tonight's meeting because they are on vacation. There are many more sitting at home tonight who are unable to, or feel it's unsafe, to attend this live, in-person meeting at a time when, in addition to the COVID-19 variants, there are also a number of highly contagious viruses in our community that threaten our health and will be in unmasked gatherings, especially for those town residents who are older or immune compromised. For some, they arrive home late from work, or perhaps have kids to watch. In all cases, they are being left out of the process, and their voices are not being heard. While we agree with the stated purpose of this proposed local law, and I will also add, the idea of using river and rail is certainly, I think is a good idea, portion of this project, to return vacant properties to gain full reuse and tax revenue, attract local businesses that will generate jobs, encourage remediation of contamination, reduce tractor-trailer traffic by supporting the use of the river and rail for movement of freight, to support green energy initiatives, prioritize the reuse of formal industrial sites, former industrial sites, and protect the character of existing neighborhoods. And to do all this in accordance with the town of Stony Point's local waterfront revitalization program, we are critical of the town's lack of transparency and lack of notification of public presentations, such as the brief presentation given almost a month ago by our town planner, Max Stack. It was insufficient and lacked any visuals or PowerPoint. It seemed not intended to engage the public's, the public's interest in any kind of meaningful discussion or understanding. Instead, we actually need a thoughtful, smart, revised, comprehensive plan with a vision for not only Stony Point industrial zone and the Hudson River waterfront, but also for the entire town, including the 9W Business District, and especially the 26 acres of town-owned property here at Letchworth. Specific comments regarding this proposal. With river and rail, Stony Point continues the piecemeal approach by adopting town zoning amendments without providing sufficient information, discussion, or details about what will eventually be built. The building inspector and town engineer are given the ability to issue reuse permits administratively, not requiring the planning board's site review or public hearing. As a result, the application of a floating zone, which would understandably provide flexibility, could also cause unprecedented, unpredictable results, unintended consequences, and potential harm while bypassing site plan and environmental review, further excluding the town residents from the process. The Stony Point local waterfront revitalization, the Stony Point Local Waterfront Development Plan, the LWRP, as we mentioned earlier, is from 1994. It is nearly 30 years old, but it does state that actions undertaken within the coastal area shall be evaluated for consistency in accordance with the LWRP policy, standards, and conditions, which is on page J8. Are these proposed rezoning actions consistent with the town of Stony Point Local Waterfront Development Plan policy, standards, and conditions? Space recommends that when proposed projects are located in the coastal zone, the application should be reviewed for consistency with the Stony Point Waterfront Revitalization Program. The review of this proposed local law requires Stony Point Town Board to refer it to the Rockland County Department of Planning for review. The Rockland County Department of Planning submitted a letter with comments to the supervisor and town board on July 29th. On August 2nd, I submitted a Freedom of Information Law FOIL request for a copy of those comments, and was told that they were not available, and only received a copy of the letter today, August 9th. Well, I'd like to finish before you speak, please. My FOIL on August 2nd also requested a copy of comments submitted by the Stony Point Planning Board, but I have not yet received a copy of their comments. Has the Stony Point Planning Board reviewed the proposed local law? I know they've been, they didn't have a meeting in July, but we should have those available for this public hearing. The letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning states that the town of Havestrough and the village of Havestrough must be given notice and the opportunity to review the proposed local law and its impact on community character, traffic, water quantity and quality of drainage, stormwater runoff, and sanitary sewer service. Did you forward the proposed local law and receive comments from the town and village of Havestrough? And if, so, can you please read them? I know you said you were waiting for those, but why aren't they done before we have a public hearing so we have that information available?
George.
The letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning states that the review must also be completed, and that you must address any comments or concerns raised by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New York State Department of Transportation, the Palisades Park Commission, the Rockland County Department of Health, the Department of Environmental Resources, the County Department of Highways, and the Rockland County Drainage Agency. Have these agencies been contacted and comments requested? If so, can you please read them into the record? Why weren't these agencies originally given this information before we have a public hearing tonight, so we know what they're saying? So people come out, they can actually hear what the other agencies have to say. Why are we delaying that? Why is a full environmental assessment formed, the FEAF, incomplete and unsigned? The Rockland County Department of Planning states it was missing two superfund remediation sites, the Stony Point landfill and the Holt Drive industrial site. County planning is also raises questions about how the town is defining brownfield, since our proposed local law uses the generic sense formerly used, meaning it's formerly used for intensive industry mining and utility purposes, and contains to be, and contains to be received or contain the potential for soil and groundwater contaminants. However, since the town will use this criteria to authorize the landing of the RRBR floating zone, the town should be more clear, and also refer to properties that are included in the New York State DEC Environmental Site and Mediation Database. Space agrees that the town must clarify if participation in the New York State Brownfield cleanup program is part of the criteria to qualify for authorization for landing the RRBR floating zone. In the greater interest of public awareness and having more information available about the unanswered questions and the agency reviews, we respectfully request that the town board not close, but continue the public hearing, and I know that you mentioned you're going to do that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, George. Do you want to take this back and redo it, because you know now that we?
I will send in an update, probably. I'll have, I'm sure, other things to say. I tried to put together the information that I had based on what was made available, and there was not a lot made available.
I know, I know the clerk wanted to chip in because she didn't have that for a long time. She got it, in fact.
I'm not sure, I don't get it on July 29th. Didn't arrive until August 9th.
I think, I think somebody said something about vacation time in the summer area today.
So that's another reason why I have a public hearing now.
Also, so you know, there's only, we're on the summer schedule, July and August is only one month, one meeting a month, so, okay, thank you, George.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Just for a minute, I'm surprised you don't know that as a public, all comments around the county land department are posted on their website publicly, they're available as soon as they're down there posted, after they're posted, they're live, it's available.
Yeah, good. Well, maybe the town should get them and put them up on the town website, that would even be better, Mr. Brian.
He knows that, I'm sure he knows that. Okay, Kevin Moore.
No, it's okay.
With this heat.
Believe me, I agree with you a thousand percent.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Kevin Moore, 130 Central Highway, Stony Point. On face value, I have to agree, this proposed amendment does sound in the best interests of the town of Stony Point, to reutilize former industrial sites or commercial sites. It's something that would probably even be endorsed by NISDAQ and even EPA, because this way you do prevent potential leaks from an existing, an existing abandoned or unused facility. So that's why I say there are clear benefits, financial benefits too, from the town, as other people have mentioned, about increased taxes, employment opportunities, impacts to local businesses. Because let's face it, the more employees that come into the town at these locations, where are they going to get their lunch from? Maybe not from a lunchroom in the, in the building itself, but from local restaurants and delis. So it would, long-term impacts, yes, but you do have potential problems. My years of experience in doing land development, almost 40 years now, I don't believe this is the right way to do something like that. George and other people have said the same thing. Let's sit down and get the master plan redone, let's get the LWRP updated. This way, everything is congruous, instead of having these overlay districts. I hate to say it, but it sounds like you're putting lipstick on a pig. This is not, my professional opinion is not the way to do land development. You should have a consistent, straight base across the board. One of the other problems you're going to have is if you try to get industrial work in here, it's going to have a negative impact on the sewer plant. I can tell you, from a professional opinion, you do not have the ability to handle industrial waste at our wastewater treatment plant. You're looking at a massive upgrade to that plant in order to do something like that.
To which plant?
Our wastewater plant.
Oh, okay.
So, for example, if you.
For which, which, which type of business are you talking about? I don't understand.
Chemical production facility, there was one mention.
Kevin, so a floating zone does not, this is not a zone that, because you want to open a chemical plant, that the town board is going to say, okay, you can open a chemical, that's not the purpose of this.
I didn't, I didn't say that.
I don't want somebody to be misreading.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't saying that, Chuck. What I'm trying to say is that you got to be careful in how you address these revisions to the code. You may want to exclude businesses like that, to say they won't be accepted, but if you leave it a blanket statement that it's industrial, then you open yourself up to a little bit of a problem. I've done work at facilities. Merkis Pharmaceutical Plant down in Rahway and Linden, I did what's called discharge prevention, containment, and countermeasures. That's where you build these concrete bunkers around storage tanks. There is a mention in the, in the amendment that you're going to remove the restriction on having gasoline storage tanks at the waterfront. That's a mistake, I don't think you should do that. I think you should take that out. You really shouldn't allow that to happen specifically for that reason. If you get a spill, you're going to have a hard time containing it, and where does the waste go? If you're just talking typical, like a lumber company comes in and wants to build a manufacturing plant to make furniture, that's perfect. I mean, the only waste you're looking at is really human waste, and our sewer plant could take that without any problem. I was just concerned that you bring in a company, or a company comes in to propose something that does meet this overlay district, because again, it's very vague, the terminology. Again, we're at the, we're at the opening stages right now, and that's why I want to bring it to your attention. I think you need to do a real serious deep dive on what you really, really want. I think you need to do a real serious deep dive on what you really, really wanna have here in the town of Stony Point. Yes, we do need employment opportunities, we, it would be great to have a good commercial base here in town that could help the taxpayers be able to afford to live here, but you also have to worry, as George and others have brought out, about the environmental impacts. You gotta be very careful, and as long as it's stipulated clearly in the, in this code amendment about, again, using the type-two standard for the SEACRA process, that this golden code doesn't guarantee you the right to do something. You have to pass through a very stringent, detailed environmental review, and I'm glad, I'm glad too to hear that this public hearing is being continued. It's a great idea to give people plenty of opportunity to learn more about it and be able to comment. Thanks, Jim.
I'm also looking to bring Max back too.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin.
Sure.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment? Okay, so, I'm gonna make, I don't have to close it, counsel, I can just-
Continue, let's take, take the time, continue.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion to continue the public hearing on the proposed river and rail brownfield redevelopment floating zone for our next town board meeting, which is scheduled September 13th at 7:00 PM here in the road building.
I'll second that motion.
The motion and a second, all in favor, I, motion carries. And, you know, the purpose of a floating zone is it gives the, the opportunity to accept certain businesses. It does not mean that because we have a floating zone and somebody can come in and build a chemical plant, but I'll have the town planner speak more on that. What we're looking at, and I should've asked you this, Kevin, when you were out, are you really involved with the master plan back when they did it?
Yes, I was also involved with the rising-
How, how many years did it take you to do the master plan?
Oh, I wasn't here when the master plan was done here, I came here in 2009, but I've been involved as a public progressor.
Okay, so, the master-
I've been here for 90 days.
Okay, thank you, George, thank you. So, the goal here is, you know, to work together, not make this political. The governor's office is, we know that we need green energy with the closure of Indian Point, we have to look for an opportunity, we saw how the river development worked with the building of the Cuomo Tappan Zee Bridge. There will be an opportunity, not just at the Lovett site, hopefully it'll attract business at the US Gypsum site that has both rail and river access. It'd be a great opportunity to be able to take advantage of the new green energy that is coming and to provide good jobs for high-paying group jobs for Stony Point residents. Our town tax, the former Lovett site paid the town of Stony Point, just a town, not a school district, $4 million in taxes. We now collect around $70,000 on that property. If, if we're able to develop that property with the right, the right business, right opportunity that fits Stony Point, we'll be able to use this floating zone and create a tax base, we'll be able to expand and do things, we need that.
General, I think, Tom.
Sure, Michael.
So, we only-
Just talk into the mic, please.
Sure, thank you, buddy. We only have a couple of commercial sites that are industrial. We got USG, we got Tilcom, we got NR, which are all big guys. For many, many years, they're empty, there's no money coming in, they're like vacant land. There's nothing. We need to do things to try to promote businesses. And everybody, you know, there's been people standing up saying, you know, we should do this, we should do that, you know, you know, this is a small project. Well, it's so small, and you guys got great ideas, bring the people with us. We're sitting here, we're all, we're all here, we're all one town, we want, we want people, we want all people, there isn't a lot of people.
Thank you. I also, I also wanna make motion, and I'm not talking on the brownfield, I've heard several people concerned about the number of units to be built here. I know Mr. Petonovic was strong against the Eta Bay Riverfront Development, but this property up in the Lovett plant is right now zoned for its pre-planned development. That property could be built for townhomes. I don't think that's a proper use. We have the Eta Bay sitting on, on the water that is working through their final approvals, I think an opportunity here. So, that's why this town board is looking for creative ways to take advantage of the new growing market in the green energy field, and I think it's a great opportunity, and I'd, I'd ask that people work together to bring this to the town of Stony Point and, and have an opportunity to revitalize, people talk about the 9W Quoeger, the, the properties, it's, it's a great opportunity, and I think if, if we have to, and we don't have so much time, this, this town is of the essence, we're not gonna rush this through, but I think we should not pass on the opportunity.
Okay.